You're ready. I think he's ready for it.
Bear's getting ready for it at the end of July.
Yeah, appeared you were just BSing waiting for him.
It's gonna be in Osage County this one.
Didn't mean to yell at you.
They'll be in first one with you.
Did your office lady tell you that I had this meeting with the...
Well, I don't think Chris, we were waiting on those streets.
Hmm.
Well, you should have supposed to tell you.
Ruler. See how long it's been there and wait.
And he was telling me, he said, yeah, he said, all the ladies in the office get real scared when there's a tornado. Why? He said, we don't have a tornado. I made a mistake saying, well, you know, the Cole County emergency management.
Let's go ahead and card. Meeting to order again. It's two-stage lie 11-2017. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Minutes of reports received and filed.
We have June 2017 reporter piece filed and June 2017 treasurer's presidency.
Okay. Commissioner committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Uh, let's see. Now, the tennis court groundbreaking is going on in about an hour, but that would make that MSP signing a...
I need to go back home.
Planning commission meeting tonight, Friday. The Sonny West management district board meeting tomorrow night.
I've been here 40 days. After 45 days, they need you. They have to let you.
Chiefs Thursday night. HBA's got to do Thursday night too.
It's a good system.
Now, we're gonna, we gotta move to next week 'cause blame Luke Meyer. He's talking, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then, uh, don't forget quarterly reports are due. St. Stan's lost picnic Sunday. That's about it.
I'm gonna try to make the governor's thing at MSP. Uh, Mike Burnskatter's receptions tonight. Cap region executive board meeting tomorrow morning. That'll be at 10:00 AM with Mike Kehoe and then, uh...
Yes, and don't be surprised if...
Lunch at Lincoln. Thursdays, United Way Pace Center breakfast. Region homeland security oversight, but I'm gonna be, I'm leaving town, so. And then, yeah, KWA's removed to the 21st, so I can do that if you want, or doesn't matter.
What'd you say, Burnskatter's having?
Uh, it's a fundraiser out at Mike Kehoe's house. Oh, wow. You wanna come?
I don't know where my mail's at, so.
Okay. Okay. Alrighty, uh, presentation from invited guest Bill Tanger to discuss FEMA updates. Bill, welcome back. Remember you from last year.
Well, that's good. I'm glad you do. Should I stand or sit? How's it work here? Sit?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, the first thing I wanna do, Chris, let me reintroduce myself for the other people. I'm Bill Tanger. It's Tanger, not Tanger. It's German with the umlaut.
Oh, okay.
Over the A. So, anyway. And I'm Bill Tanger, intergovernmental affairs for FEMA, and, uh, and you guys are the last county I'm coming to, which is a good thing because I mean you had the least damage. And that is true. Six counties, six counties this time, had five last time, so there's some continuity here. But I wanna say that I hope I don't see you again soon.
Me too.
Nothing personal, you understand? Here, let me, let me give you these things. First of all, get them on my hands. You should have my card from last time, correct?
Yes.
And you have a folder from last time that you know that you kept, right? Because I reminded you to keep that folder, because it could be another disaster right around the corner. Here we are. So, I hate to be pessimist, but it is a, it is a recurring phenomenon. Please keep your folders. This folder is similar to the last one, but it has some updated things in it. And again, I'm gonna try to be mercifully brief and outta here in like two minutes, but, uh, so save your questions. Pipe down, Farr.
I like that already.
But, uh, my understanding, and first of all, you guys did not get declared for individual assistance this time. You just got public assistance, which means that the burden is on Mr. Farr here and the city and the county to apply for any projects. But, uh, the, the, the individual assistance situation for other counties, everything, that's pretty much the same. Nothing has changed in individual assistance this time around of any consequence. However, the public assistance role has changed, and Bill and I attended the applicant's briefing here for this area, and, and they went over those issues, and you will have a person assigned to anything from the county within the county or city, uh, from public assistance, and, uh, and that, that person will handle all the public assistance stuff. So, there are some changes in that program. They are in the folders that I gave, that I've given you. I think the changes are positive and, and, uh, something that has been needed to be done and now is in place. Hopefully, it's gonna work. So, uh, let's see. Having said all that, uh, I think I've covered everything I wanna cover today. And when I leave, there'll be a lady taking over from Region Seven out of Kansas City. Her name is Brenda. And, uh, but at least there's some continuity from the last disaster to this one. And, um, I think that's, that pretty much covers it. If you guys have any questions? And if not?
Do we have anybody applying for public assistance?
What we, what we did, uh, excuse me, uh, the county, we did not, but, uh, right before the end date, Jeff City has a large, very large project, much like our lower bottom road a couple of years ago. Uh, we're on Lincoln Street off McCarty. Uh, so we, they will do that for the city, so the city thankfully is the PA. We didn't have nothing in the county. So, we met with them, had the, the crew came in from FEMA originally. They did an onsite, and then that allowed them to be a. So, when we met at SEMA a few weeks ago, it was good to see a familiar face with Bill there. Uh, so Jeff City will, it's gonna probably be over $600,000 damage. So, we appreciate it. They don't have an IA, but I appreciate the last time we did that. They had a great staff in there to help a lot of people.
Right. Right. Thank you. I appreciate the comments.
Very good.
Um, I did forget one question. You guys don't have any outstanding projects from previous disasters, right?
Nope.
Okay. Because that, that is, and that is one of the reasons the...
We're done, yeah. We're all done.
Everything's good, right?
Yep. Lower Bottom Road.
That's one reason the, uh, the new PA program is in place to, to kind of take care of those deficiencies that might have existed in the past. Anyway, uh, so, yes, you got one project. Uh, we had an odd little situation where somebody in the county, their address was Jefferson City 65101. I don't have the street address, but they, uh, they filed, they registered with FEMA as for individual assistance. Not sure who it was, but, uh, I'm sure that'll be taken care of. Anyway, um, it's always a pleasure coming back here to see you guys, uh, and it's an odd situation. You know, my life is one disaster after another. I hope I don't see you soon.
So is Jeff's.
It's not a good time unless someone's being hurt.
You don't drive a Jeep, do you?
Or broke.
If I pass gate?
Yep.
I'm permitted to.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you again, and I hope I don't see you soon.
Yeah, I hope we don't see you. Okay. Bids and contracts, the real estate purchase contract. Are we tabling? That is a... The real estate purchase contract. That's one we're...
There was punished.
Took a next, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Approval and sign of annual JCMG Show Me Healthy Wealthy Women program contract.
These are just our contracts with, um, JCMG where they agree to provide the services at a discounted rate, and we reimburse them through that DHSS Show Me Healthy Women contract.
Okay.
So, we've had several of these, so is this just another amendment or...
Those were our contracts with DHSS. These are our contracts with JCMG who actually performs the services, and we reimburse them through that DHSS grant. We're kind of the pastor for that money.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, but there's six copies to be signed.
I move that we approve and sign the contract with JCMG for the Show Me Healthy Women.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any unfinished business? Okay, new business, accounts payable review.
There's one invoice out there we'd like to approve and run today just to test the consolidated bank accounts.
What is that one invoice?
It's actually the transfer from general fund to block.
I may refine a new rec for that.
I don't know what y'all did last Friday. I knew I should've been watching.
Wait till you go to vacation the next time, Jeff.
How come this phone's ringing all of a sudden? I think Corvette was mentioned.
Red Chevrolet. We, you know, it's just, it's just a Chevy.
I'm admitting that we approve accounts payable and review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vacation of right-of-way for Brittany Court.
This petition came before us just a couple months ago. This is the one to sign. Uh, this is the area that's part of the original Grace Creek Valley Acres, Section Two. The original developer and his wife have since passed away. And they have sold the remaining, his daughter has sold the remaining interest to another development. And they have changed what they would like to do as far as development of the subdivision and where Brittany Court was gonna proceed and go to a further cul-de-sac. They're not gonna do that anymore, so the surrounding landowners on that side would like to have that right-of-way vacated. Uh, county'd also like to see that vacated so we can go ahead and have that redone and get proper curb and gutter across where that street used to be. It's just a small section there.
I'm fine without any questions.
Where's, uh, where's this at? What part of town are we talking about?
Grace Creek Valley Acres. Joe Tewee House's old subdivision.
Okay.
Eric Bryan has purchased the remainder of the subdivision ground.
So, that's coming off of the Scott Station out there?
Go Scott Station, Scott Station Lane, all the way back up in there on top of the hill.
Brittany Court is just coming off.
It was gonna be a cul-de-sac.
Okay.
But they, when, when Joe died and they started divvying up some bigger properties, they decided they weren't gonna proceed on that. So, after this'll be vacated, Bartlet and West will come back with a revised preliminary plan, and we'll redo the street plans through there so we can make sure we can get the proper curb and gutter through there. Or actually, shoulder through there. No, that one's there, that gutter. That curb gutter up on top of the hill there. This'll just make it cleaner.
So, whoever owns this is gonna be doing it?
The street. They'll be doing the street. The only thing now, this gets rid of the right-of-way so the surrounding landowners can each take that, that right-of-way over that, that we're not gonna use nor do we want just sitting out there.
Right. I agree. Okay. I'm good. I have a court order number or... No, Debbie, you got a court order number on this? How many have we done?
One. I don't know.
Nope, I've never put the numbers on. I was always instructed not to.
All right, we'll just, I move that we approve the court order to vacate the Brittany Court right-of-way. Is that correct?
It's correct.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Sign them and pass them on?
You got three copies?
I don't know.
I don't know. Still sign them all.
Can you state one copy?
One. One originally said.
Okay. Okay, vacation of portion of right-of-way for Claysville Road.
Getting all my stuff mixed up here, I apologize. Basically, on this one. This is a different situation. This one falls under a different state statute because of the way this road was originally set up. It was an old Harvard-Harvard Road essentially, or an old special road district road. It falls under a different state statute. So, unlike a quick court order, like we had on the previous one, state statute says on the first available day of the term, the petition shall be read in to the record, and then it shall be continued to the first available meeting of the next term. That it has to sit and wait. Uh, if at least 12 residents do not make remonstrance, I pronounce that right, against it, then at the first available date of the next term, then the county commission can go ahead and vacate the roadway that's petitioned to be vacated. Basically, what it is here, this is a portion of Claysville Road right after you go across. All right, it's, it's after you go across the railroad tracks going across the bottom. Essentially, this is a piece of road we don't want anymore. It's a maintenance nightmare. The bottom falls out of it all the time. We don't grade it very much anyway. The surrounding landowners would like to just keep using it as farm ground and pretty much shut it off for part of the year anyway, so they can raise the cows across it. We would vacate it on the south side of the railroad tracks, however, if it's vacated at the railroad tracks, railroad will not maintain that crossing anymore, and that crossing needs to stay in place for emergency reasons and a couple of other purposes. They will vac, uh, the landowners are going to dedicate enough ground so there will be a hammerhead so we can turn the grader around and get back in and out. And we worked that out with them already. We think this will be a lot better thing. Claysville Road, that's a lot of, that's an area where a lot of times, you know, you just get the kids in there, and they just wanna go, and they tear up the fields, and they tear up the road and everything else. You know, ferry's not there anymore, hasn't been there for a hundred years, so we think this'll be another good situation just to get rid of some right-of-way that we don't need. This, probably about two years we've been working on this project to be able to get everything in line with the trust and get the proper signatures for the trust and everything else.
So, is this where Claysville kinda crosses the tracks there?
Right past the tracks, yeah. Go about, if you go, there should be attached to it. I can show you a drawing here.
Yeah, I was saying, we don't have any maps.
This is the very specific right-of-way where it crosses. And what they will do, it'd be vacated from here forward, but in the meantime, before that, they will dedicate this right-of-way here so we can have a proper turnaround and get in and out. We wanna keep that crossing there just for emergency purposes more than anything. If we keep the crossing there, the, the railroad will maintain that. For emergency reasons, we would like to keep that.
We're talking right here?
Uh, where's Chuck's guy at? Let me see here.
Come on, click her up.
No.
It's actually right here, so that... Track will be from here forward, so they'll get rid of that from past the tracks forward. And they've got easements to all the surrounding landowners already in place, so they have properties on it across the roadway. It's just we will no longer maintain it. If you come already, you get to that road. 179, you take Claysville from 179.
Up by Church Farm.
Up front, around that sharp curve.
Greg Bowman built a house right there on top of the hill. Wasn't that Greg right there?
Yeah.
Just a couple of years ago. And it just cuts down along through the hill, goes past Chuck's grain sheds, some other stuff down through there.
I guess I'm not understanding here. Here's the tracks here.
Here's what, yeah. Here's 179.
So, you're gonna get rid of all this?
It, that's actually, this is levee. This Claysville goes from here to here. We will get rid of.
I look like I rode one along the levee here and then over here.
That's something different, yeah.
So, where's the road going to here?
It goes to here. It'll go to here like it will. We'll maintain that, and then right past the railroad tracks.
This is the road here?
Yeah, it cuts in down like this.
Okay.
It actually makes another 90.
Okay. It's not really showing the road there.
Yeah, it's very narrow. It's only a 30-foot by maintenance is all it is. Through that, it cuts right along the hill. It's actually carved out on the side of the hill through there. But at one time, there was a ferry, I guess, that went back and forth across there, is what I'm told.
That's Claysville on the other side of the river.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, is that, that road coming off 179? Does it serve anybody?
Chuck. Chuck Stack and then the, uh, the other members of the...
That Italian drive or whatever?
No, that's, that's, uh, Mrs. Stack's property there on the other side. What this does, it serves, where it goes down through there, the residents who front onto that and have a right-of-way across through there, but Chuck's got his barns down in there, and then they also use that to... Some of the other people use that to get to their property on the rip, in the bottom ground.
There's just that one house there by the tracks. That's...
That's not even a house. It's, the one house you can see, it looks like it's on the tracks, it's actually what I'm on the block.
Well, I think the one boy was... I think the one boy was actually, had a shoust in that one building down there.
By the green vents?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, so they're not actually served by the road. They're just adjacent to it and they have to... Okay. I misunderstood. I thought that went to there.
For the portion that is softly vacated, no residents will be affected directly. They'll just be landowners, and they've all signed off on it.
So, I guess I'm talking about the section from 179 to the tracks. Does there are any houses along that section?
Not directly fronting, but they do, the land does touch it from the subdivision.
Greg Bowman's does upper top, and I don't think he fronts on that, but...
It's more or less an access road for the farmers to get to their fields.
That's correct. And they're, they're the ones who came to us to vacate. For security, we vacate that one, right?
I don't think they'd be in favor of that. But by statute, I don't think we can just abandon it, you know, if there's people that object to it, since county funds have been, uh, it's been maintained for as long as I've been here, as long as Bishop's been here, so.
I guess that was kinda my point, is, is a farm access road that we ended up maintaining. Now, it's still a farm access road that they're usually get to their fields, so. I don't have a problem with what you're recommending. I mean, I just, I question why we even maintain the road at all. I mean, there's no houses on it. You're talking about putting a hammerhead there so we can turn around.
They'll be, they're just gonna dedicate, they'll be constructing a hammerhead.
It's a win for us, Chris. We don't have to maintain that bottom road. Every time we have a flood down there, uh, it's a pain to get it open back up.
It also helps with security. I know both the Stacks and McCloskey's have had quite a bit of equipment stolen or tampered with down there over the last couple of years. Kids are getting more brave all the time, driving through the middle of cornstalks trying to make nice patterns they can see from above.
Anybody's ever, they just put a gate there at 179 and not let anybody enter?
I don't think they wanna maintain that hill.
But again, at this point, you know, we can bring that up at the next meeting if you'd like. It just, it can be continued until the first available date of the next term.
These are all people that have land along the road or...
Actually, it's any 12, the, the direct land over town is lined on, but then any 12 residents of the township. It's needed. It's a statute Jill and I looked it up, probably developed in the 1880s, the way we figured it out.
Pretty archaic.
Yeah.
I'd say.
That's why I was looking at Greg's door.
If we were charter form government, we could do it a little different.
Yeah.
This is one of those that goes way back to the 1880s when they started redoing the county road standards. Back when, you know, you had to show up once every four weeks or, or once every four months to help build the road.
So, you're saying that anybody can petition that with any 12 signatures from the township?
Yep.
With no right of the landowners?
That essentially states that any 12 residents of the township or townships through which a road runs may make applications for the vacation of any such road or part of the same as useless. Adverse Section 228, not 110, not 1.
And then how does that, just trying to understand, how does that go forward if somebody were to do that? I mean, I mean, so the petition goes out, does, who gets to vote on that?
Strictly you.
We do.
County commission or the county court as it was originally stated, the quote-unquote road studies.
Yeah, we want that on us, don't we?
Yeah, yeah.
We'll be like jumping on the ice.
I'm just kinda amazed that, that Claysville actually had, I mean, 'cause I, we go to Claysville and eat, that that actually road had enough traffic that it would have a ferry. That, that's, that's just amazing. It's...
Well, it's a lot shorter going that way than having to drive all the way around.
Oh, I know, but I, I just...
So, back in the day.
Back in the day when there were horse and buggy.
Yeah. That's, that, that is kinda...
Do I need to take you down into South Cole County sometime?
It's kinda neat.
See where the cars are.
When we were little at the old...
You're gonna hear evangelism when you get down there.
The old St. Thomas. The old St. Thomas.
I ain't slowing down either.
Very, I like, I thought that was...
You got to pee or just gotta have to wait. We're not stopping now.
Oh.
I'm gonna go out for some meth heads and...
So, what do you need from us, Jim?
We just need to approve the petition.
Well, just accept it in the record.
Just accept it in the record, and we'll schedule a meeting for the first available date of the October 20th. That it can be taken up again, reran into the record.
So, who's gonna construct the hammerhead?
It's my understanding Mr. Stack was.
Yep.
Even if we did, we're getting rid of all that other stuff. We don't have to maintain it. It'd be worth it just to get rid of it.
Yeah, 'cause he's gonna fence it off and put a gate in there with a lock on it to keep kids out, so.
I'm guessing he wouldn't want the rest of the road, but...
I'd, I'd doubt it very seriously, but he might.
That'll support you, right, isn't it?
Yep.
Okay. I move that we accept the petition to vacate a public road into the record.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That's the first to sign, so. Discussion of staff in the jail.
Yeah, yeah, I'm coming up here, Bill. I can stop it. Take your hand over there. I trust you.
So, I can school now?
Yeah.
I got my ruler here. My golly.
So, you get, you, you be careful. He's got...
And mace or pepper spray or something.
All kinds of weapons. You guys got my email, the reconsideration for those two. I was wrong on the, on the amount in here, 'cause it was the 16th at the end of the month. We were actually, uh, revenue line for federal prisons was $501,000, $600,000, uh, which puts us at $1.2 million, so we're even higher than what my paper says, so. Uh, we just request that you give us the two supervisors. As you know, and we all agree that this, for this year, that would be free. Uh, we have a budget neutral. We have enough funds in there that we can hire these two supervisors and be free to the end of the year. Next year, there was the talk of $48,000 for next year's budget and our salary line. Well, for two supervisors for $48,000 is a pretty good cost anyway. But if you're looking for, um, money that we're bringing in, you can look at our revenue line just in federal prisoners and see that we're gonna be, at least be over $300,000 more in the revenue line than what we're budgeted for in 2017, so I think we've made up more than enough money for that $48,000, and I ask that you give us those two supervisor positions. And this is to stay on 12-hour shifts. If we don't, if we don't get the two supervisors, we'll have to go back to eights. And, and right now, we're managing our overtime. They should be at, well, close to 50%, and I think they were at 24% the last time I looked at it, so. And that's where we're getting some of the money to, to, uh, to get these two positions as we're moving monies out of overtime to be able to accomplish this.
How many jailers do we have right now, John?
I don't have that number in front of me, so I don't wanna even try to lie to you. There's, there's full-time and then there's part-time.
I guess how many full-timers do we have is the main thing, 'cause I know we started out like a... 'Cause I know we started out like 27. We've added a few here and there and see what number we were at.
I didn't bring my org chart, so I can't tell you definitively what those numbers are.
I know we can get to it somewhere on here too, but... Debbie, where do we go to, to get to that?
You can look in your budget from last year. On the F drive.
On my F drive or Commission F drive?
Commission.
I've got too many drives up here. Go to mine or go to your Commission's budget?
Commission's budget. You can actually go to budget for 18. It's in there too.
Oh, don't you go to the other one?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's how I want to go to. I double-clicked too quick though. Computer is painfully slow this morning.
Brian?
Give him a week off and it just...
So 18 COs, eight deputies, three corporals, four sergeants, two lieutenants, that's 6, 9, 17, 35. Those are all strictly in the jail then?
Yes.
Okay. Make sure I got this straight. I didn't get a chance really to look over this since the last time I got it or since we got emailed, so kind of thinking out loud and going through the exercises now. This counts as exercises for the paid due. So how many people do you have on at one time then, John? You got the ones in the, doing the room in and one in the satellite?
Well, you, you really, yeah, no. The positions that we gotta fill, the, the basic minimum is we have to have one in satellite. We have to have one in master control and then we have to have a supervisor and you have to have a booking officer and those are the, the main ones. When we go to eight-hour shifts, our minimum staffing is five. So we have five people taking care of up to 140 people. With 12-hour shifts, we're able to bring in up to eight to 10, depending on the day, uh, because we have to give time off. There's holiday time, sick leave, all that kind of stuff. Um, so with being on 12-hour shifts, it gives us more manpower. The issue that we have right now is, uh, having a designated classification officer, which we didn't have to worry as much about when we opened as we do now because of PRIA, the Prison Rape Elimination Act of federal government. So we have to be able to classify in accordance with that. The other aspects we have is property. Uh, we have to have someone dedicated to, to do property. We have a whole room full of property in there where people get, um, transferred out um, or they, uh, post-bond and they don't pick up their property, so we're stuck with all this property in the back. Now, we're going through that now, uh, with the extra manpower that we have on. Uh, there, one guy is actually going through that now and he's able to start taking some of this stuff. We send out letters. We're, just a month ago, we sent out a letter to everyone that was on there. We put a notice in the, in the newspaper. People don't come and get it, then we start getting rid of that stuff. Either if it's clothing, we go to Salvation Army. If it's food, then it depends on who we go to, Boys and Girls Club gets some of that stuff. Um, and then, uh, lastly, the issues that we have when you only have five people working is if we get a medical transport, then we're having to call people in to, to take somebody to the hospital versus if we have, uh, seven or eight on, we're able to take two of the people that's on duty right there and that's where we've been able to save some of our overtime.
What did the prison rape thing, how many did that require?
No, the Prison Rape Elimination Act is a, is an act that came out that talks about classification, uh, where we have to...
Okay, that requires the...
Yeah. We have to classify our prisoners to make sure that the nonviolent offenders are with nonviolent and so forth. And that's time. I mean, when you go through, you have to ask a bunch of questions. It's just time. Well, and it also takes up space where we can't just put anybody anywhere in the back of our pods.
So you're saying you need like eight people on minimum?
I, I would feel better with seven, but with, with these individuals that we have now, we have anywhere from six to eight whenever, uh, when it's going on. It depends upon what's going on. Depends on if we can get the part-timers to come in, uh, reserves coming into work. We're able to get more time off.
And that covers your property processor transfers to the hospital or whatever if you have stuff like that come up?
Well, it helps. It's, it doesn't, it doesn't solve the issue, but it helps because we're not having to call people in to take a transport.
'Cause right now with 35 people, we're at seven.
No, you're...
Five minimum is what you said at a time, so seven people.
But you need to, you need...
Thirty-five.
You need to look at the schedule in totality because, uh, whenever you're looking at 35 people, you're looking at 365, 24 hours a day. So it, it's not as easy as just dividing it by numbers. You have to actually, and I can get a copy of our schedule up here. But, uh, you have to look at the schedule itself and see, 'cause we have training days we have to do. There's, there's a plethora of issues that we have to take care of down there with the manpower that we have.
Yeah, and I was including the vacation and sick and stuff in there before 'cause that's stuff you gotta take into consideration, plus when you have other transfers and stuff. But you basically got 168 hours in a week and divide that by 40 hours, but you have 4.2 people, so. Five people per shift.
Five people's not enough.
And... Five people per shift would be 25 per week would cut, and that would be overage. Right now, y'all are at seven with 35 people, right, or not?
Are you looking at three shifts or two shifts?
I'm looking at total hours in a week.
Yeah, you...
I know, I'm gonna drive you nuts with that.
No, yeah, because you can't look at it by that way. You can't look at it in that manner. You have to look at it in a, in a shift faction. You have to look at it that, it has to, those positions have to be covered all the time, so you just can't take a number and divide it and it'd be good.
So I got a little overage in there though at that 4.2 per week, or 4, 4.2 people to cover the 40, 168 hours, if you have five people to cover it.
Five people's not enough.
That's a shift.
Five people's not enough.
So how many do you need then?
Seven.
Seven. Seven per shift?
Yes, minimum. And we won't get that.
That's not downtime.
Even with the, even with 12-hour shifts, we can't, no, Jeff, there's not because there's, you know, you know, and I brought this up about inmates. When you increase the inmates, there's more medical, which means there's hospital visits, there's, uh, 96-hour commitments. Then you have more services in there, which is a 12-step program, the church. When you do these things, it costs manpower. We just can't take somebody and put them in the, in the 12-step program and then not go check on them and not go be in there with them. Uh, anytime you have more inmates, you have more movement. Uh, more movement is the biggest issue you have in a, in a jail. That's the reason why we had the pod set up the way they are, where they do their visitation inside their pod. They did, they eat inside their pod because the less movement you have, the, the less risk you have. Sit call, whenever you have increasing inmates, you have sit call. Someone has to transport those people back and forth. So if you have 135 people and only five people working and two people get sick, you've just depleted all staff that you've had. Then you have court. You have to go court back and forth. Now, transports, transports help with that sometimes, but if they're across the country bringing in prisoners, they're not allowed to do it. Uh, laundry. We have to do laundry. With increasing inmates, you have increasing laundry. And it don't sound like much, but that's a lot to do whenever you're trying to clean and feed and do laundry. Uh, visitation, same thing. You have to schedule visitation for everybody, not only for, um, uh, the video visitation, which isn't, it takes care of itself, more or less. Our, our staff still has to schedule it. But then you have lawyers coming in wanting to talk. We have church members wanting to come in and talk. Uh, and we have to arrange that and it's, again, it's manpower. And then lastly is the meals. We have more meals, so you have to feed more. So if the more people you feed, that, that takes up one of those people, those five that you talk about. Uh, you have to have one that goes and feeds everybody. So that means when that one is feeding, there's two people left up front to process whatever has if it's not too outfeeding. And then you only have the one guy in satellite watching everything. So it's, there's more to it than looking at numbers.
Okay. I, I mean, I'm looking at the numbers and I understand you got more income coming with the federal, but there's no guarantee that that's gonna happen next year. So when we do this, this isn't just a one-time thing.
But we should have opened with more anyway, Jeff. You and I've talked about this. We disagree on it. I'm right, of course, but...
Hey, you know, I thought university on Facebook, I'm not...
We started short.
Not a university.
We started short, so, uh, we're just trying to get the manpower up.
And I probably would agree that we started a little short, but we've added to that as well and we've agreed to add to it.
Mm-hmm.
And there's a lot of things we didn't really think about or I didn't think about.
Well, each time that you...
Transport, sickly, uh, even processing the property stuff, so.
Well, and, you know, and the other thing, Jeff, uh, we did start short. We both agree there. And every time we've come to you, well, not every time, but most of the time we come to you, you guys give us people because we're able to communicate to you on the needs for these.
Well, if you can justify it, sure.
Right. And I, and I believe I've justified that just by, uh, saving 20 over 20% in overtime alone. I, I think that we've, 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 uh, offset that cost by, uh, bringing in more, uh, revenue than we had before. I think that we have been able to justify the two supervisors. Uh, I think it's, uh, I mean, we were short. We're trying to do it with 12-hour shifts. I don't like 12-hour shifts, uh, but it's working down there. The 10-hour shifts at Patrol Division works. It drives you crazy on the schedule they got, but it works for us. So it's a, it's one of those things that you really have to get into it and look at it and then try to make adjustments and do the best you can for the citizens and for our clientele.
Okay. I, I understand and agree with most all of it except for I just, I still, it takes the 4.2 people to cover.
I don't know where you get point two, man. Uh, there is no point two. I don't have any little bitty people working for me.
Yeah, you do. I saw something. Well, you got the 168 hours, so if you just divide that by the 40 hours, which I know you, you don't have exactly 40-hour shifts, but divided by 40, that's 4.2, then just round up to five, so five to cover each position, which you're wanting seven for each spot. That's 35 people and that's where you're at now.
That's for five minimum. And five minimum doesn't work.
Five people for each shift to cover the 168 hours in a week.
Uh, you, you lost me on that, but...
I'm not a very good math teacher. I like math, but, so. Are you too fine with it? 'Cause otherwise we're, got an exercise here that's just wearing us both out and not gonna really change anything. I'll let you all ask some questions.
I, I, yeah, there's, gosh, there's been a lot of violence in, in prisons and jails. There's an article in the paper a day on jail. I mean, it, it's a safety factor too. You know, it seems like some of our inmates are, they're getting mean or they're getting, but I, I've, um, it's...
We've had a few injuries of our inmates back there.
It's, uh...
No, I just went to court on Friday on where I got, they spit in my eye, so.
But I'm looking at the safety. Yeah, we, we're, we've been lucky, but...
Well, we've had, we've had quite a few people injured back there. I mean, you know, we've had quite a few people injured because of the manpower. One just recently, so it's, it, uh, I think it's, I think we've shown, uh, where we've, we've made the money and can justify the two people to do the 12-hour shifts. I think the 12s have worked as far as keeping overtime down. Tim Harland's and Vance Ortmeyer's done a, a good job on getting the overtime down and I think this is the, is the next step, is, as bad as I hate 12-hour shifts, but I think it's the best thing to go for our jail.
You're gonna get rid of the 12-hour shifts?
We will on the 16th if we don't get the two people.
Yeah, that's what, last time he had said it.
Yeah. I was gonna do it this month, but, um, the, uh, Tim Harland came to me and said that, uh, we had a bunch of training scheduled in July and if we went back to the eights, it would cost us a nu, a lot of overtime. So we stayed on 12s one more month. You're busting at the seams, Chris. What?
I was just waiting to hear more from Sam.
Well, I'm, no, I'm, I'm in, I'm in favor. I just, I think...
I'm on the fence with it. I, I can see where you're coming from, but I, I, putting the numbers on here, just, I'm still having troubles with that, so we'll see where they're at instead of us.
And I'll send you a schedule, Jeff, so you'd be better understanding what we're doing.
Yeah, it might help, but we'll see.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I'm just concerned about the budget. Obviously, you know, your revenues are up. And then I, I sent you an email. I'd like to see us maximize those beds. So, I think there's some room in there that we could get more inmates from other counties in there.
See if, as long as we can get more federal prisoners, I said we go with that. They're easier to deal with. They pay for their own medical bills. Right now, we are, and I gotta talk to Jerry about this, but, uh, we have over $130,000 in unpaid medical expenses from inmates. So I'm wondering if, if we can't, 'cause I know that EMS has a, don't they have a company that goes after bills? I, I don't know if that would be something that we can go to them and turn this over to them and let them try running some of this down and try to get some of this... Yeah. So maybe we can talk to them and try to, try to get the same thing going for us. See if we can't retrieve some of that money. And that's the good thing about the federal prisoners is if they go outside of the, of the jail, uh, they pay everything, including for our two people that's guarding them. Versus if we do a, um, out-of-county prisoner and we take him to the, to the hospital, while they may pay for the, the hospital visit, I'm paying for the people that's watching.
Yeah, I saw that when my mom, when Linda was there and you got two deputies and I watched them and I'm like, God, this is...
We got one there right now.
If, uh, later on with, with the new health department, if we get a nurse practitioner, can, can we use like that nurse practitioner maybe for some of your medical...
We have a good, we have a great company that, that takes care of that right now and, uh, they do a, a pretty good job on, uh, mitigating, uh, that, the medical emergencies. But more importantly, uh, they take over all the risk for being sued. So that's my favorite thing about it.
That he's just had a lawsuit.
Yeah.
And we're, we're totally bombed.
Yeah, okay.
But it's now between the inmate and the medical contractor.
Okay.
I mean, I just think if we can maximize, uh, the amount of inmates that we have in there, obviously you can't fill it completely full because you got so many people you're processing in and out every day.
Well, we gotta be able to classify still, so, uh, we can't completely, with 180-bed facility, um, you really don't want to be above 160 because you go above 160, it, it hamsters us to be able to move prisoners around, depending on if they get into a fight, if we have to increase our ad seg. Uh, females has a lot to do with it because our, the female inmate will, will flux. So if they get more than 24, then we have to open up another pod. That means we have to take all the 24 people that's in that, males in there and distribute them to the other pods. So it's very problematic at times. So you, I understand what you're saying, Chris, and I, and I agree with you to a certain extent, but we have to be able to maintain control of the facility. And to do that, we have to be able to move people around. And we work with other counties too. We just had one, uh, and we traded inmates because their, their inmate, or the inmate we had, which we had charges on, but so did this county. And they had one that had two charges on him. Well, he was being problematic in our jail. So we just transferred him over there and then we took that other person. So we work with people all the time to reduce...
Are we getting any of Boone counties?
Mm-mm. No.
I think they were saying on TV, they're, they're actually having to send some of their...
We have. I don't know if we currently have any. We have in the past. We have taken them.
Okay.
The problem you have, and I don't know if you read the papers, there's two different jails that had, uh, inmates from other counties in there and they started riots and they're having to get swat. I know Wright County, I think, was one of them. It was actually a fire and then there was another one. And, uh, so you, you take the, you take the chance of, of taking somebody you don't know. And it's different if you, if he's one of our, uh, one of our arrests, one of our inmates, but when you're taking it from another community.
They gotta send you their best they wanna get rid of.
Right.
Yeah.
Not always. Not, it, some of the, some of the counties know that if you do that, then we won't be taking your prisoners no more. So, uh, so they know that and they try to prevent it. Like we, some of ours, it's been housed out like that because of, uh, like I said, they have charges and so do we. Um, if they become a real issue, the first thing that county will do is drop their charges, so the only charges is ours and we have to go get them. will do is drop their charges, so the only charges is ours, and we have to go get them. And we'd gladly do so. It's the price of doing business.
So for 2018, it's gonna increase the salary line 48,000?
Yes.
And then are we gonna reduce part-time and overtime, any at all?
We already did to make this one this year, and we won't raise it up from the, where it's at right now.
Still playing with numbers.
I understand.
Well, your salary line's gonna increase a lot more than 48,000.
No, by Debbie's numbers, it was 48,000 next year.
No, the salary line will increase by whatever the total cost is of the two people.
What?
Should be. Eighty thousand dollars, ninety thousand dollars or something.
So the total cost of those two people would be that, but he saved some money in his salary line, so the increase in the budget would be closer to the 48?
Save some money in the salary line, how?
Because I'm giving up part of my overtime and part of my part-time.
Well, aren't those budgeted separately, overtime and part-time?
They are currently, but he's-
So are we gonna back that out?
Right. He's saying that move would be continued next year also.
So overall salary, let me, just so that we're all clear, salaries is one thing, overtime is another thing, part-time is another thing. So we're gonna decrease part-time, decrease overtime, and increase-
If you, if you, if you approve this, right, then I'm gonna de, this year, I'll decrease my overtime and my part-time, right? And then next year, that, that number, and I don't know what it is right now, but that number will remain the same when we go into 2018. In other words, it'll stay at the, at the number that we drop it to this year. Does that make sense?
Half a year though, John.
What's that?
That's only for half a year though.
But Debbie, in your, the document that you gave me, said that next year it'd be a $48,000 increase.
Are we just talking about the supervisors, or are we increasing-
Two supervisors.
Taking two existing inmates and supervisors?
No, two additional supervisors.
So I mean, in general, I'm all for adding more people if we can offset it with part-time and overtime. Now, I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page here. I mean, we're six months in, so are we gonna look at what part-time and overtime, you, your total is at the end of the year, and then decrease it? Or are you gonna decrease it now for the first six months?
I'm gonna decrease it now for the rest of the year, and then keep it at that level for 2018. I'm trying to pull up the budget right now so I can, because I think I have it.
So I guess you've saved, what was the, the figure? And I don't have one in front of me. I was trying to look at the budget, but-
Nah, I can't find it either.
What was the figure he'd saved in overtime for the first six months of '17? Was it $15,000?
I think it probably yes.
Okay.
I think it was, I was taking 15 from overtime and 10,000.
10,000 from part-time?
All right. Let's just, I mean, I'm not gonna hold you to it, but I just kinda want to know numbers. So do you anticipate that your overtime, if you save 15 in the first six months, you anticipate you're gonna save 15 in the next six months?
I don't know the answer to that. I, I don't wanna give you, you know, because we're going into, it's a busy time.
Right.
So, and we're trying to get a lot of training done. One was fire, with our firearms. So we have a better chance of saving overtime if we stay on 12s. If we go back to eights, there is no chance.
But you're, you know, I guess you're saying, hey, I've done a great job now, give me two new positions, okay? I mean, I would expect that you would do a great job for the next six months.
Well, actually-
And you would save another $15,000.
Well, but there's, there's, it comes to a point where it can't go down any further. I mean, I, I mean, you can't just keep cutting overtime every year. It's not, it's not gonna work out that way. But-
But we're adding more people, so.
Yeah, but it doesn't, it doesn't work that way, Chris.
Well, you know, Greg came to us, and we asked this question, Greg was sheriff, and I, you know, you're not Greg, and I don't wanna compare, but, you know, the reassurance for us was, we'll give you more personnel, cut the overtime. And that's always why I can't guarantee. And I get it, there's some variables. But, you know, I mean, if, if I'm saving $15,000 in the first six months, I would think that I would try to work to save $15,000 in the next six months, because you have more people.
We'd work at it. You're right. We would work at it. We'd do the best, the very best we can. But remember this, Chris, we've, you know, we talk about doing good with the budget. I think the last three years, we've turned in a black budget. So we, we are doing very well with our budget. Because of the way we handle our money, we have over $7 million in our contingency fund. So I think we've done an outstanding job for the past 12 years on, on dealing with our budget, with the, with the, with what we've had at hand. So I think that we have shown in the past that we're doing very well on our budget. And now, what we're asking is to get these two people so that we can continue not only where the jail is more safe, but it's also, we're showing that we're making the money for it. You know, we have the Department of Mental Health contract. They pay us no matter what. It's 120,000 a year. They pay us if they have a bed in there or not. Those are all things that we've went out and done to ensure that we're getting the best revenue line, to do the best we very much can with the citizens' money.
I agree. I think you're doing a great job. I mean, obviously, our, our sheriffs, the law enforcement, sales tax, all of that is looking good. And a lot of that has to do with the federal prisoners. But at the same time, you know, I just want some assurances that you're gonna work to decrease the overtime, and then when we look at 2018 budget and look at 2017 numbers, that if you have saved 30,000 in overtime, that we can reduce that budget, or at least to some common number.
Oh, I don't have, I don't have a problem with that.
But, I mean, I just don't, I don't wanna budget you for '18 for the same amount of overtime.
No.
And, and more salaries. I mean, work with me a little bit. Obviously, if something comes up, we're more than willing to work with you, but to try to set a budget that's actual, or that we can work within, you know, if that overtime was to decrease 25,000 for '18, or whatever that number is, and part-time decreases, say, 15,000, I mean, it just gives us, I think, a sense of comfort that, hey, the Sheriff's Department's really trying to work with us. We're all on the same team. We're trying to save the citizens of Cole County money and, and operate as efficiently as possible.
Yes.
That makes us all look good.
Yeah, and I don't have a problem with that.
I think you're doing that.
And I, I do. And I think that when, when budget talks come along, we start putting our numbers together, when it, you know, we gotta put it together in August, is the bad part. So, so that means we're not gonna get the full effect of this to the end of the year. So, but we can look at that at the end of the year and, and play with those numbers. I don't have a problem with that a bit. If we can show that we're saving, and I'm gonna say 10,000 more with the, with that overtime, I'm not opposed to reducing overtime. But we have to just look at what we have. And like I said, one of the biggest issues that's killing us, we did two 96-hour prisoners, transports last night. So it's, and I'm on a task force that's, I guess, starts today, and we are through the state, and we're trying to do something to stop the recidivism. And, and so it's, it's something that we look at and we strive at, at all times, to try to reduce the amount of people coming into my facility, which reduces the amount of people that goes into the prison, state prisons, and so forth and so on, so.
John, I just wanna clarify. Before, we talked about two new jailers, and then we also talked about two people moving them up to a different position. So I didn't really have figures on two new supervisor positions.
I've stated the whole time that we're adding two supervisors. That's what my emails all put down. I'm trying to, I can't find the stupid.
So figure the, the 90,000 was two new jails. Who would be promoting two?
Yeah.
Right.
And then adding two new jailers.
Okay, so that's the same.
It's the same thing.
Yeah.
It's the same as adding two new supervisors. Right?
Depending on what, he was gonna bring them in, because these two are existing.
Right.
So I didn't quite understand what he was saying.
Do you have our budget pulled up right now? What was it, what's our overtime for this year? I don't remember.
75,000.
Yeah.
At the end of June, you had used, just in the jail.
Right. So to, to make sure that we're all on the same sheet of music, Chris, if, if our budgeted line number for overtime for 2017 was 75, if we give up 20,000, whatever number we gave, then we would reduce our overtime this year by the 20,000, which means we would go to 55,000 in overtime, and that's what it would be in 2017. Does everybody understand that now?
I'm not saying we have to adjust it today. I'm saying that-
Oh, I understand.
You know, obviously, you know, if you're gonna work with us and try to reduce part-time and reduce overtime, and we're gonna add more personnel in full-time, that, you know, obviously, we're all working on the same page, trying to do what's best for the operation.
Yes, sir.
And then, you know, when budget comes for next year, we can take a look at the numbers and see how we can adjust those and-
I wanna be first on the budget, though, because every time Larry Benz goes before me, you guys say, no, no, no. So I wanna be before Larry.
Well, you're not gonna ask for anything next year, right?
As far as you know.
Where you at, Jeff?
I'm still a math person, and I, my math says if you want seven people per shift, each shift you're gonna need 48 hours times that seven, or the, 24 hours a day times the seven days, 268 hours times seven people per shift, you come up with the 1,176 hours to cover for that week. Now, if you have 35 employees, times 40 hours for each employee, that's 1,400 hours per week you have to cover that. And that's 200 and some hours over. So I guess I'm struggling to see where-
Jeff, I think if you're using the total number of people in, in the jail department, you're not, not taking into consideration that there's a couple of, like, jail clerks and things that don't actually-
No, I didn't include those three.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there was-
And transports. You can't include transports, because they don't, they don't work on the operation of the jail.
So how many of those 35 employees do the transports?
Four.
So we're actually at 31 employees?
Four. Right.
Okay. That's kinda where I was getting at with the math while ago. How many employees do you actually have? Four?
That doesn't sound right either.
The jail that covers those shifts that you're talking about.
Yeah, I was trying to, I, I just don't have my-
Because to me, the numbers aren't jiving at all, and that's why I'm struggling with it, John. So I'm trying to figure out where the, where the shortage is. I mean, well, since Benz is still here, we'll pick on them guys. If they come in and say, hey, we saved, we saved $30,000 in overtime last year, can we get two new employees? I'm gonna probably laugh at them, going, no. But I will commend y'all on the, on the overtime, that y'all have reduced it. So I'm just struggling with this math part of it. So of the 35, if it's not actually 35, that's gonna make a lot of difference. If you take two out of that for transports-
Well, you gotta take the two lieutenants out, because they don't cover a shift. They're supervisors, so they come in and out. You can't count the four, or the three clerks. So that's five down.
Okay, who counts as a supervisor per shift because of the-
Sergeants and corporals.
For seven per shift, you were including one supervisor, correct?
Sergeant and a corporal.
So then you really only need six per shift, if you take away the supervisors.
Well, if you wanna do six plus, I'm fine with that. If you wanna do six, because we're not there now.
Six plus a supervisor. Because if you're gonna take the one away, then we have to take away the supervisor from the seven, as well as what we're taking away from the 35 employees, right? Or not?
I think he's saying that he wouldn't include the two lieutenants, but he would include the sergeant and the corporal.
Well, then let's just do six plus a supervisor, because the lieutenants are, can cover supervisor, right?
You can't use them there.
What are you gonna use them for?
Well, the lieutenants are insured. They have to make sure that this, that everything is running like it's supposed to, right? Vance Ortmeyer-
So you can't even use them to be the supervisor?
Well, they can do it on a, not on a regular basis, but if needed, in an emergency situation. But these guys are the ones that get called in at night if something bad happens at the jail. These are the ones that are dealing with 24/7 on, on policy and procedures for the jail, as well as dealing with inmate green sheets, doing inmate hearings inside, disciplinary hearings inside the facility.
I'll give you those two, then. Now we're down to 33.
Well-
That's four sergeants, three corporals, eight deputies, and three clerks. That would be 33. But if they're saying, I have to take the transport out, then you're down to 29.
Yeah, 29. That's right. I just counted them. I'm scared.
Go about it different ways.
Well, I don't have my org chart. I should've brought my org chart. I didn't-
Okay. So if we do the 29, then we're down to 1,160 hours available per week to cover the 1,176 hours.
But you can't take, you can't count it like that.
Why not?
Well, because you still have to have people that have time off. You still have to have people that have holiday time.
That's what we were including in the seven per shift, I thought you were saying.
So, so right now-
Actually, that's 4.2 per week, so I rounded it up to five, so.
If we go by, let's do it this way, then. We're not getting anywhere, by the way, but I'll just-
Yeah, we are. We're a hell of a lot closer than we were about five minutes ago, believe it or not.
So if we, if we say seven, right, seven is, is the minimum staffing. Right now, we'll just go by 12-hour shifts. I'm only going to eight, because then we're really gonna blow them out.
You still have the same number of hours to cover a week.
No, no, no. Let me finish. So you have seven people to cover, right? You multiply that times two.
Seven, what are we multiplying times two?
Two shifts, two 12-hour shifts.
Two 12-hour shifts.
That's 14 people.
12-hour shifts.
Then you have a shift relief factor that you have to put in there, 2.5, right?
What's that for?
Shift relief factor is for sick leave, holiday, vacation, training. So you multiply that 2.5 by 14, is what? 35? Is that right? Thanks for your help, Kristen. Yes, 35. So there's 35 people. We have 29 right now that can work in the jail. So we're already short six. So I want six people now. I don't want two. Just kidding. So, so-
Well, you were getting closer. Now we're getting, we're probably getting done.
So you can see what I'm saying now. You have to think about the shift relief factor when you're looking at a 24-hour operation.
I was looking at the shift relief factor and going from the 4.2 people to the five and rounding up.
You're-
So I had a little bit of a shift relief in there. So, but we are a hell of a lot closer than you probably think we are, John. Like I said, I got 1,176 hours per week that I was looking at covering, and now when we get down to the 29 people, you have 1,160 hours, the way I'm figuring it. So, which says you don't have enough.
And I understand where you don't wanna jump in and give us the six people that I just brought up, but, and I'm okay with working them in increments, right? And that's what we decided to do in the beginning when we opened up, that we'd open up bare bones lower than what the study that said, and then move up as we can, right? And this is just another stepping point for us to move up closer to the, to the manpower we need to be.
I gotta take a picture of my notes here, so I'll have this stuff later on.
I do it all the time, man. I do it all the time.
I need to get on something different in my calendar. I have some paper up here, but our budget won't allow us to have paper. Give it all to the Sheriff's Department. Oh, and Sam.
We'll give you a sheet.
This little red Corvette sheet here.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if I'll be able to transfer all them chicken scratches over. Why can't we do this at budget time? Why do we gotta do this twice a year? It's making my head hurt.
I can't do it. This is 2018, because I've already told you guys I wouldn't come to you with any more manpower in '18. I'm a man of my word. I won't do it.
No, but you will do it twice in 2017.
I didn't say anything about '17.
That's more stock rather than you go back on your word.
I didn't say anything about 2017, so. I didn't say anything about two thousand seventeen, so.
So, do you anticipate any other increase in expenditures in the jail? This year or next year, over what you've been budgeting?
At, at this point in time, Chris, I'm gonna say no. However, uh, Tim Harland is real big on training. So, uh, something could come up, uh, next year and some ti, a different type of training that needs to happen. But other than that, I, I don't foresee that.
I know you had said something about meals, you were gonna be rebidding that, I mean.
We are rebidding, and I don't know what the amount, that amount's gonna be. I, I bet you it's gonna be pretty close to where we're at now, I would think. I hope. But just for your, Jeff, for your information, on the three shifts, if we do the same thing on three shifts, it's fifty-two point five people. So, I'm thinking I wanna go back to three shifts.
Man, I do have a pad of paper in here.
Oh.
It's buried underneath all my.
Well, then, I'm gonna take mine back.
Look, how shiny they are. That's a Comex mirror, I was trying to show them for a terror lane, since you brought that up. You put that up, you can see if cars are coming. Visual aids. I hate doing this in mode here. Killing me smalls.
I know, but if we didn't have the money there, it would be different.
If you wouldn't have promised not to ask for them in eighteen, we wouldn't have this problem. Could've talked about it for eighteen.
Actually, I would've still came to you and done it this year. Because.
Well, after that, you're gonna have to.
Now, it's an excuse to not build that.
Well, I'm, what I'm hoping it does, even by doing it, if, even if I was gonna ask next year, I would've came and asked this year, because it still reduces our overtime, reduces the amount of work on individuals in my jail, makes it safer in the jail. So, I would've still come to you in the middle of the year. I mean, it's, I'm not gonna lie, and I told my guys, when they came to me about the twelve-hour shifts in January, I told them no, and they kept coming at me, and I said, look, we'll try it. We'll try it. I'll give you six months. And if, at the end of six months, you can show me that you're making money, that you're saving some overtime money, then I'll go to the commission. I, I had no intention whatsoever to come to you, 'cause I didn't think they'd be able to do it. And I'll be damned if they didn't.
I hate it when that happens.
Yeah, I know.
Well, I still look at the safety factor.
Yeah.
It's, it's, gosh, it's, it's become an epidemic throughout, well, everywhere. And I really don't want that.
We've got a maximum security facility. Safest facilities in the state, probably, as far as county jails go.
Don't tell that to the inmates, that, that's when they're.
Solitary confinement.
When they're.
The way, the way ours is set up is, is very beneficial. Now, I, I don't know how some of the, uh, smaller agencies with the older jails.
Yeah.
There's no way they can be compliant with Pria. Well, nobody in the state of Missouri is gonna be compliant with Pria, because in Pria, it says anybody seventeen or younger, uh, can't be with inside or sound of anybody. Well, that's not true with Missouri laws. Seventeen-year-olds can be in our facility. We have one right now. Or, we had one in there. So, but we have to do the best we can to work towards that, that, that not only is the best for the inmates, to make sure we don't have, uh, fights in there and, and we don't have assaults happening in there, but, but it's also, uh, mitigates the liability to the county by doing so.
So, just for clarification, before I give my answer.
Okay.
When you say you're not gonna ask for any new people, that includes all funds. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Lady patrol, new deputies.
I will not ask for any personnel in two thousand eighteen, I've already said that. I'm saying anything about aircraft, but I'm not gonna ask.
Well, automobiles, I think, I think, uh, pursuit vehicle, uh.
That red Corvette?
Yeah, I think, I think.
I think Riley still had that stingray, that seventy, was it a sixty-eight or a seventy stingray?
I'm still saying, if you wanna try that Corvette for a pursuit vehicle, try to catch them. See if you can catch them. Well, I'll do that sometimes, see if you can borrow it from them. Exactly, we're bringing that up, 'cause it just messes everything up. We had things going, moving again.
Well, we're talking, but, yeah, always have vehicles.
We're just stalling all we're doing. We're either stalling, giving the answer we don't wanna give, or stalling, giving the answer and saying, yes, so. I'd meet you halfway, 'cause with the new math, and I don't even like new math, but, um, I'd, I think we could justify one person.
One won't work.
But if we do any more, then I would wanna look at for two thousand eighteen. I know you said you wouldn't ask for two more in two thousand eighteen, but doesn't mean we can't put two in there in two thousand eighteen.
And the other problem is, we're gonna blow our numbers up. So, in two thousand eighteen, you're gonna say, uh.
How are you gonna blow them up? You did it in the first five months of the year, why can't you do it for the last seven months?
Because we won't be in twelve-hour shifts. I can't keep putting them in twelve-hour shifts with the supervisor, the way it is right now. I have two squads that have two supervisors on them.
You did it for five months, John. You were on good behavior for five months.
So, I can't, I can't continue to push the, push the, especially the supervisors.
At least we're closer than where we were when we started.
Yes, sir, we are.
I'm tired on this, so.
I'm not gonna do two today. I don't, unless we change the math again and it totally changes it. Like I said, with, the math changed with the twenty-nine people, that did bring my number in under. Could you make it work? You could, but then you'd be where you're at right now, apparently. So, I think, give you one more, figure out how to make that work for the next seven months. And then, two thousand eighteen, we can look at the numbers, the overtime numbers, the part-time numbers, the federal income numbers, the increased revenue, and look at it all at one time. So, I'd be able to, I know that's not what you necessarily want, but.
Nope.
Now, you're gonna ask for six, so next time you get, well, if I get two, that's really what I wanted.
So, I mean, I, I think there's potential for additional revenue beyond what, uh, beyond what we've made from the feds. I think if you can do, or you or Tim or whoever can work with other counties, the feds, whoever, to maximize our pods, not saying that they have to be totally full, but to get, you know, female prisoners or whatever to maximize those pods, I think there's, uh, room for a substantial increase in, in other revenue. But, uh, so, I mean, at this, at this point, you know, I really don't wanna add any more people, but I'm gonna tell you, but I'll, I'll go ahead with the two, so. Long, long way to get around it, but if, if your, uh, your overtime and part-time are up within a year, though, you may not get them next year.
I, I, yeah, I'm, I think you've done a hell of a job. You're, I mean, I've talked to you a lot. And you're, you're trying awfully hard, so.
Listen to my staff and, you know, a, a, a good, a good leader will listen to what his people are telling him and then try to make the best decision. And they, they convinced me, they changed my mind on these twelve-hour shifts, so.
Well, sounds like you got two of them now.
I need clarification, so are you talking to two new people?
We're almost done, Debbie.
Two supervisors?
He's getting two supervisors, correct?
Correct.
Basically, you're gonna promote two and then add the other ones to fill their spots, but, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, basically, you're getting two new supervisor positions, right? And I don't care how you fill them, but obviously, there's plenty there. If you wanna promote two, from a jailer to the supervisor or however, then you got an open position, so.
And does that mean sergeant or what is that?
Sergeant and corporal, right? Sergeant and corporal. So, it's two, one cheap one.
God, don't, don't put it that way. They might be listening, just.
I love them.
Made somebody cry.
Say, listen, it's, yeah.
So, you're okay with it? Y'all need to vote on this, or is it a good deal?
We just did it.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's okay, yeah. I don't think we have to vote, do we?
Do you have a budget transfer?
Yeah, we'll work on that.
I hope, and I hope you look at new vehicles.
Well, there, we'll look at that sixty-seven stingray. I'll never get in it.
John just got a brand-new truck that you can. I would call it new, but it's not new yet.
Hey, I'm the same way. My O8's that way. Get a new truck.
Do we have anything else to come before us, before we go back into closed session?
Oh, the comedy night next Wednesday.
Yes.
Hey.
Yes.
Everybody saw it, get your folks together. Just try to make a good show, it's a lot of fun.
Do you have tickets here or do you go to Sam's?
I have tickets. I have tickets. Sam has tickets at the store.
I have tickets.
Or you can buy them online.
Yeah.
It's really easy online, too. So, I'll buy them online, or else if they got tickets, that's.
I'll be coming to see you all sometime next week.
So, this is a comedy night for Thunderbird for United.
United Way.
Yes.
I don't know if they did it the same way we did it.
Is Jeff doing the comedy?
I'll probably be part of it.
I think, I think we'll all be, I think we'll all be kinda part of it.
Somebody just finished.
I put it in my radio, guys, it can make fun of your elected officials, Cole County elected officials. Hey, you're wicked.
We need to get a good show on, though, because they're doing a favor for everybody doing it there and getting somebody in. And we get, your first hundred tickets goes to pay for the show itself.
Yeah.
I don't know how many they told you you had to sell, but.
They said max would be two thirty.
Yeah, but it's still, it's, I don't know, everybody bitches about nothing going on in town or Jeff City, but this stuff, this kinda stuff they're having, so we need to support it.
Yeah, I think Quentin's really, I'm impressed.
It's a good time.
Yeah.
They'll have some drinks up there, too, so. They're good comedians, so. Next Wednesday?
Nineteen.
We got doors open at six, show usually starts around seven.
Is it usually like an hour, hour time?
Oh, it's a couple hours.
Yeah, they got two, they got two comedians, so.
They'll probably have three or four. They'll have somebody, yeah, they'll probably have somebody opening up for them, too, though, and local, somebody trying to get out there and get their feet wet. Sometimes they're as funny as the other guys, so.
Yep.
All right, that's my PSA.
Okay. Anything else before we go into closed session?
Nope. I'll make a motion, go into sex, uh, closed session, present to section six, ten, oh, two, one, subsection three, and subsection one.
Speaking.
Roll call.
We're not doing the personnel one.
Okay, just for one, then.
Okay.
No, there's two personnel.[1779.11]